All right, like to call the order the November 25th, 2024, Mount Lake Terrace Planning Commission meeting to order. Would you please take the role?
Chair Batista?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Landis?
I'm here.
Commissioner Stenson?
Present.
Commissioner Wu?
Here.
Please note that Vice Chair Betcher and Commissioner Morgan are both absent for right now.
All right, so, item number three, approval of the October 28th, 2024, meeting minutes. Does anybody have any changes or corrections? And since I can't actually see you guys right now, oh, I can see you now, great. Feel free to raise your hand, so I could tell you guys have a question, but usually there's no additions or corrections, so I'm seeing some shaking heads.
Men.
Okay, we'll go ahead and declare those accepted as presented. And then we've got item number four, public comment. Do we have anybody in the, there in attendance in person who'd like to make a public comment tonight?
No one is here in person, and no one has signed up online to make public comment.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on to item number five. Looks like introduction of the new planning commissioner.
Hi, everyone. My name is Cameron Wu, really excited to be here. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve with you as a planning commissioner. I'm originally from Houston, Texas, and I come from a real estate family, so I've spent a lot of my life in primarily residential real estate. Currently, I work for a company called Arrived, and we are a fintech startup that is offering financial investments in real estate to both accredited and non-accredited investors. So, lived in Mont Lake Terrace for about three years now. My family and I moved here from Las Vegas, which is actually where I'm currently in right now, visiting my parents and my brother and sister. So, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions, but very excited to be here.
Welcome.
Oh. Well, it's great to have you. Can't wait to meet you in person.
Yeah, likewise. Sorry, I already had some travel that was pre-scheduled before I was appointed a commissioner, but yeah, definitely looking forward to meeting you all at the next meeting.
Oh, absolutely no worries. Look, the one benefit COVID brought us was the ability to attend these meetings remotely, so it's, it's, it's an option that many of us have taken. This is my first time since the COVID scare ended, so don't worry about not being there, because I'm not there right now either.
Yeah, looking forward to meeting all of you in person as well.
Yes, welcome.
Welcome.
All right, and it looks like Commissioner Betcher has arrived now?
Yes, sorry I'm late, I got held up.
Oh, no worries. Okay, so, let's move on to item number six, review draft 2025-2031 Stormwater Comprehensive Plan.
Thanks, thanks commissioners. Let me get set up here so you can see my screen. Is this what it usually looks?
It looks bigger. Did you want this to show?
Not really. Let's see, just trying to get it to. Oh, okay, that's right. Okay, thank you. And then that, okay, perfect. Thanks very much. Sorry about that, I seem to always have a little trouble with getting that display correctly. Okay, well, thank you, I'll try to make this fairly brief. I have a quick presentation, it's about 15 slides, about the Stormwater Comprehensive Plan. This is something that needs to be done every six years to establish the 6 and 20 Capital Improvement Plan for Stormwater, and also to evaluate any new needs that come up over the six years, so that we can set revenue requirements and establish rates for that time period. These are what the Stormwater Program is trying to achieve through the comp plan. We are working toward environmental stewardship, accessibility, equity, efficiency, and effectiveness, and also making our plan adaptable and resilient for the future, which will include future impacts of climate change. These are some of the probably easy to anticipate, and maybe a little bit less easy to anticipate, concerns with regard to 20, the next 20 years, with the anticipated growth that has been predicted through the comprehensive plan process. As we have more cars, we have more people, we have more risk of pollution. We also need to, on the city side, spend more time inspecting new stormwater water quality and flow control facilities. And one thing that I've been seeing quite a bit, that I think is going to, a trend that's going to continue, is that there are smaller developments, particularly one parcel town home development, that sometimes don't trigger flow control or water quality treatment. In and of themselves, they're small and not particularly impactful, but as a land use pattern, it can be kind of like the death of a thousand cuts. So, I'm concerned about this, and I've, you know, we were looking to see how we can compensate for this through, you know, looking at regional facilities, or modifying the requirements for smaller developments to make them more easy to build and more compliant with environmental concerns. And then, of course, I talked a little bit about climate change. But, I'm sorry, I should go back and say that, for climate change here, we don't have to worry about our outfalls being, you know, swamped by rising sea levels, but we do need to worry about more intense, short storms that flood our system, and our system is not designed to cover, to handle those. It's designed to handle long, slow storms. So, that is something that we're looking to see what we should do about. Sorry, I didn't come up very well. Anyway, these are the three things that are also considered as part of the 2024 Stormwater Comprehensive Plan. We're not required to repair fish barriers in the city now, but we may be in the future. And so, this is looking ahead to see, how can we prioritize the fish barriers that we have in the city? How much are they going to cost? And to try to put this together in a reasonable fashion to plan for the future. We also have a new stormwater permit. Ecology, every six, every five years says, okay, this is your new permit city, so this allows you to discharge stormwater to local lakes and creeks. These are all the requirements that we're adding to what you have to do already. And then, of course, looking at climate change flooding, and then urban heat island mitigation. This is a summary of the new ecology permit requirements. Some of these we're working on right now, some of them require additional steps to, to handle. Tree canopy goals, policies, and documentation, I believe, are going to be covered through the Urban Forest Management Plan that I talked to you about earlier. We need to do some additional outfall mapping. There's a real desire on the part of ecology to reduce some of the forever chemicals that are PCBs in building exteriors, and also reduce the use of PFAS, which is found in firefighting foam and a lot of other things as well. This permit further identified overburdened communities as those that, as a location. So, I think in the city of Mount Lake Terrace, that is pretty clearly defined by the people who live within a quarter mile of Highway 99 or I-5. Those people are disproportionately affected by noise and air pollutants from those highways, and this, we should be considering how our stormwater projects benefit them. Then, there's, you know, a little bit more documentation on our existing street sweeping program, and the last one is one that we're going to cover through a project I'm going to talk to you about today, which is the 220th and 70th project, to treat, to provide water quality treatment. And then, the last requirement, and last, new criteria, is that smaller projects, and including smaller road projects, are going to trigger water quality treatment. This adds quite a lot of cost to public projects, and may require new development to spend more money to meet this new threshold. This is the, this is how we implement stormwater standards in the city, this ecology manual. We are now working from the 2019 manual, but we are required to adopt this one by mid-June, or the end of June 2027. We could adopt it earlier, that would have the benefit of bringing the city up to the most protective standards, but it also might catch some of our projects that are in development and require them to be additional cost, which could be pretty, pretty hard for some of our projects that are grant funded. This, this project is very near and dear to my heart. This is a project where we're going to take 34.2 acres of the area around 220th Street, between I-5 and Hall Creek. This is an area that has a lot of commercial, residential, and very much a lot of arterial traffic going through it. And this, you can see at the, the image up top, is the, those purple, dark purple and light purple lines are the stormwater network. All that area is currently being, any rain that falls in this area is currently running down the street, running down the commercial parking lots, and right into Hall Creek without any treatment. This would put in a media-filled vault, that would essentially, we would essentially reroute the stormwater pipes in this area, send it through the vault, and then return it to the creek. This would remove, particularly, we would attempt to remove something called 6PPD QuatQ, which is a toxic chemical found in tire particles, that is very fatal to fish. So, this project is, has been funded by Ecology for over $657,000 to develop the design and engineering. Once this is, we have an Ecology-approved design, we are in very good, a very good position to apply for another grant for the construction, which will pay for 75% of the construction cost. So, this project, I think, is a great project, and we're definitely going to do it, because we have the money coming up front, you know, from, from Ecology. This is another project on our Capital Improvement Plan. Sorry, it's not a very good picture because of all the darn blackberries. I need to put a better picture in here. What this is, is on Hall Creek, right above 220th Street, if you, you know, you look north, there's a 125-foot sheet piled dam that was put in in the 80s, through another, another grant from Ecology, to keep the uncontrolled sediment that was coming from construction sites up north, from going into Lake Washington, Lake Ballinger, and causing the water quality to be one of the worst in all the area around. So, this has been effective in removing that sediment. In fact, it is so effective, that it regularly causes flooding on the next street north, because there's a backwater effect, and it's a fish barrier. We'd like to remove all the sediment, remove the dam, restore the grade in the creek, and make this a much more fish-passable area, and also try to mitigate and reduce the amount of flooding that we have on 216th. However, to be honest with you, it's going to be very difficult to get funding for this project, and the cost estimate came back at around $3 million. So, so this one will be one where we're going to be actively working to try to, you know, get, get funding for it, but we would probably not compete as well as if we had a Chinook stream going through the city, that we could try to make a very strong case to fund. The third project is this city-owned pond that was constructed in 1980. It's off of 212th Street, as you, as you head toward Briar to the north. It's in a watershed that has a fecal coliform limit, and the pond essentially has filled up over time, and all the water kind of short-circuits through the pond right now. It doesn't actually stay in the pond and receive any water quality treatment. What we'd like to do is to revamp this pond, bring it up to current flow control standards and water quality standards, and this project, I think, has a fairly good chance of getting funding in the future. But, we are going to do it further down the line, because there are other projects that are more high priority. The fourth project I wanted to talk to you about was the aging of stormwater infrastructure. This picture shows, if you can believe it, a 12-inch corrugated metal pipe that was just recently uncovered in, fairly near here in the city. I don't know whether the pipe was from a bad batch, or whether the soil is specific, is particularly acidic, but the pipe itself had just completely broken down. So, these, this is an example of some of the pipes that we are finding around the city that need to be replaced. We need to develop kind of a conveyor belt of projects that are being designed, and then sent out to bid for construction and fixed. So, that's a strong component of our future work over the next six years. The one project I didn't talk about here is Main Street Phase 2, because I'm sure you're probably fairly well, fairly familiar with that one. The Stormwater Program will contribute to that project in 2026 and 2027, assuming that we get the next raise grant. This is a breakdown of the costs for the projects, and where we think we're going to get the money. What I have done with the budget is to say that we are only going to do the sheet piled dam removal, the Wildemere, and the Wildemere Pike Pond retrofit, if we get funding for them. So, I have included the match in our budget, but not the overall cost of the project. If we don't get funding, then we will defer the project until we can. This is another source of revenue for the city, which is the capital facility fees that are levied when new development is, comes into the city. So, this is based on impervious surface. And as you can see, there's a highly variable amount of money that comes in over the years. The different colors show different estimates of growth, that, and the estimate of growth that we are going to be using for the, the comprehensive plan and the rate study is 1.5%, which is closest to the amount from the comp plan, but maybe a little bit less rosy. This shows what I was telling you about in terms of the funding. The dark orange, not the pie chart, I need to update that, but the dark orange bar chart part is the part that I think we have fairly well secured, is the 220th portion. The yellow is unsecured at this time, but to be, you know, gone after to fund the projects. And this is how we anticipate the revenue requirement working out, to cover our operating expenses, our existing debt service, and to pursue the capital projects that we need to do. We will start raising rates 1.5% in 2027, but we will not need to do that in 2025 or 2026. Any questions?
Yeah, I, I have a few. With the PFAS, I know that the firefighting foam gets used a lot for airports and, and on military bases. Do, do you know if Fire District 1 actually employs firefighting foam?
I don't. I have had a brief discussion with David Sherman, our fire marshal, about this, and he was very aware of it, and also very concerned about it because of the, well, frankly, because of the high cancer rates that they're seeing in some of their firefighters. So, I don't think that it's going to be a difficult discussion at all, as to, you know, what kind of alternatives can be made to serve this purpose. But I will have to get back to you, and I have more information on that.
And then, for the 220th and 70th Water Quality Project, since we, you know, just sort of visited Melody Hill as part of the comp plan update, and I'm assuming any kind of new redevelopment, we're going to want to see, you know, probably a better design of sidewalks and planting strips and bioswells, will that be able to be taken into consideration with, you know, improving the water runoff effort there?
This project will not actually affect any of the drainage in that area. It will be a fairly simple rerouting of drainage at the bottom of the hill. If you, you know, if you, if you know where Nelson Business Park is, then it's around that area, because everything else will just gravity flow to that location.
Gotcha, okay. And then, for the Wildemere Project, the fact that the, that apartment complex, and, you know, the unincorporated county portion right next to Safeway is now there, have you seen any effect in, in the type of runoff that we're getting at that location?
Oh, do you mean coming into the pond?
Yeah.
Okay. No, I mean, we are not currently, you know, monitoring that for anything other than fecal coliform, which is, the levels are typical for stormwater runoff, and also there's ambient monitoring that's of the creeks itself, which is being done by Briar on a monthly basis. So, nothing out of the ordinary, that I, I haven't seen anything out of the ordinary in that location.
Okay, that's, that's good, because obviously, you know, when that was being developed, they, you know, they're, you know, they're kind of focused, you know, internal to the site, meeting environmental requirements, but I don't recall there being any discussion about how it could affect adjacent land, so, and it being so close to that. And I just wanted to make sure that we're not being adversely affected by that development, since we had no control over it. That's all the questions I have. Does, anybody else have any, any questions? Since the screen is sharing, the little group shot's really small, so if you've got your hand, wave, go ahead and wave it, so I can tell. Looks like Commissioner Betcher, thank you very much, go ahead.
Yes. Yeah, so, I'm always glad to see urban heat island pop up in these things, because I think it's like, something we're going to have a lot of complaints about in the future. I did have a couple of questions, that'll probably help us as we do our work forward, that might dovetail with you. You mentioned, like, I guess you could refer to it as maybe non-point pollution sources or something with the small-scale development with like a single lot coverage, and you mentioned that's something that might not be captured in like our stormwater modeling kind of things. What kind of assumptions go into that? And are there regulations or like certain numbers you would like to see us hit? Like, I think for a lot of our, like, sort of R1 through R3 developments, I don't know if we're necessarily expanding the footprints of the building that much, but I imagine it would be getting bigger, and then we goes, as we go to like some of our apartment buildings and town center type things, and neighborhood center type things, I imagine that would be a big increase in impervious surface. So, I'd be interested to hear kind of your take on your assumptions of where we might see some of those problems, and kind of like, what the bounds are of, like, you know, if we have 50% impervious service coverage, 40%, 80%, whatever, whatever it is, like, you know, kind of what the impacts of that are, do you think would be to your work? And if there are mitigation strategies, we could be looking at as sort of our smaller scale lot development?
Yes. The requirements from Ecology are all driven by amount of impervious surface. So, it's not necessarily lot coverage, but it, you know, up to 2,000 square feet, you only have to follow erosion control requirements. Between 5,000, between 2,000 and 5,000, you start to have to follow what's called minimum requirements, 1 through 5, so, you know, the biggest part of that is onsite management of stormwater, which could be rain gardens, or could be perforated pipe, or could be, you know, dispersion, you know, there's a range of things that can be done. Once you have developments that are, that are larger than 5,000, you know, up to 10,000, they may or may not trigger flow control requirements and water quality. The water quality is driven by the amount of pollution generating impervious surface, and then the water quality is driven, I'm sorry, the flow control is driven by amount of impervious surface, or whether or not it's, you know, 0.15 cubic feet per second more than what's there already. So, it's, it's, the, the moderate to large-size developments all have flow control and water quality features. The small, the very small ones that are less than 2,000 square feet are probably fine.
Okay.
But it's that middle, that's that middle zone that I feel I'm concerned about, because we're just not triggering any of the things that would mitigate small site. Which, it's not a problem if you only have a little bit of it, but if you have a lot, it does get to be a problem. So, we're thinking about strategies such as, you know, what could we put in more, you know, regional detention structures? Or, you know, are there, the other thing that happens on these sites is that, because you're trying to control, you know, certain size storms, you get very large, you know, tanks with very small, you know, control plates, you know, so, or restrictor plates. So, I've been working with, you know, the civil engineer, Lucas, on this particular problem, and trying to make decisions that make sense for both the development community and for the city in terms of protecting the environment.
Okay. Do you think that would look like a prescriptive path, maybe, for these sort of middle ranges of buildings and developments that you're kind of concerned about? Like, you know, maybe it doesn't require a full review, but we've got some like, you know, you can do X or Y or Z based on the square footage, and that would mitigate whatever we expect to come into the system?
The problem is that most of the small-scale mitigation strategies require land to disperse or infiltrate and that sort of thing, but with these small developments, it's completely pavement and rooftop, right? So, there's not very many options.
Right.
That we're finding, yeah.
And I know in, you know, our middle housing development code, we've got, I think, 45, 50, and 55% are sort of the thresholds based on the number of units of building coverage of the site. I don't think we currently limit impervious surface, which we should. I think, in my opinion, like, places with a lot more stormwater control do kind of have regulations about these sort of things, like, you can't just pave the whole thing over. So, as we move forward on that, I think I'd really value your input on like, any kind of code we might have, because I think this is something we need to look at when we're developing the final regulations for middle housing and some of these other like, sort of one-to-two lot developments that we're going to see throughout the city, that we don't really have stuff.
Yes, I mean, thank you. I have been reached, reaching out to some people that I know in other cities to try to figure out what's to try to figure out what's happening because it's not just us, it's everybody. It has the same problem because it's the same state code they're trying to meet. So I haven't found any good examples yet. I doubt anybody's cracked this one.
We're leading the way.
But I'll keep looking.
Okay. Yeah. And if there's like things we can do, you know, rooftop gardens or bioswells or urban, like, I think, I would sort of like to see like a library of things people can use, these things that don't require engineering to like, you know, be able to appropriately mitigate this because I think this is a bigger, like, other regions have this problem much bigger and I think we're going to start having it bigger, but maybe we don't, you know, we're starting to realize it now. My second question I had was, you mentioned cost impacts to some of the smaller road projects. Can you expand on that a bit further, like what sort of things we might be seeing? And I guess that.
Yes, well, the, the big change was that the threshold for requiring water quality treatment, of course, has been lowered for road projects. So now it's not just, you know, new pavement, it's the new and replaced pavement that can trigger this. So I, there's a fairly generous grandfathering in period, which is why I think Main Street's going to be okay. But other future projects that we do, instead of being able to do more road projects without having to do water quality and flow control, it's specifically water quality, that's maybe a thing in the past, in, after 2027.
Is that something where you could preemptively identify maybe like projects that might be a little cheaper? Like, maybe it's a lot more expensive to build a big pipe under a road that's coming down the pike? But if you have, you know, an area where maybe you put bioswells instead, that's a little outside the project, is that something where looking at it holistically might help a bit?
Yes. I mean, I think that the work that's going into the Main Street project is actually, you know, becoming more and more innovative in terms of like, can we infiltrate here? Put a bioswale there, you know, that kind of, just trying to peel off little pieces of the drainage in various places and disperse it. So that we do have fairly up-to-date standards, engineering standards for rain gardens, you know, bioinfiltration fields, swales, different kinds of options that are in the engineering design manual. So those are available.
Okay. Great. And I know there was some discussion about needing to decouple our stormwater system from our sewage system. Is this also part of that? Is that part of this as well?
Our system is a completely separated system.
Okay.
So that said, we have a lot of what's called infiltration inflow in our sewer system, which is causes our pump stations a lot of problems and, you know, causes a lot of problems with capacity inside the system, and that's in the sewer system. I have worked in combined systems, like the one that's in Seattle, certain areas of the City of Seattle are combined. But this one is not subject to the kind of decoupling, as you say, that is more necessary in Seattle.
Okay, well, that's a relief. I know that came up during our comprehensive planning process that we are somewhat limited by sewer capacity, and I thought stormwater was involved somehow, but it sounds like...
It is. It is, but it's not a direct connection. It's leaky pipes.
Yeah, it's just infiltrating. So then that takes capacity that we need for storm, or stormwater sewage treatment.
Okay, so 70-year-old pipes are certainly part of the problem. And then my final question is, I know you mentioned some of these specific projects, the one off of 220th and 70th specifically, but also the Pond Project off of 212th. Is the Pond Project off of 212th behind those apartments that?
There's a trail on one side of the street. And then across the street, there's a pump station. And then you might see like a grassy area, there's a turnoff there as you come down the hill.
Yeah.
So it's on the, yeah, it's on the, as you come down the hill, coming from, you know, going toward Breyer to the left.
Okay. I know that trail I specifically, like, you know, when I'm tooling around town on the bike, like going from the high school through, you know, the neighborhoods down to that area behind the apartments and then, you know, potentially all the way down to Scriber Creek, I feel like is a potential like non-motorized transportation corridor in the future. It just seems like some of it already exists. The topography is kind of favorable. For a lot of these stormwater infiltration projects, I'm interested to hear also maybe how they might overlap with some other potential improvements, active transportation or parks or anything like that.
That project, we have talked about combining with an upgrade to the sewer pump station there, which is badly needed. So that would be that connection there.
Okay.
Other areas, you know, I mean, the idea of a stormwater park is very appealing. It also could be something we can get grant dollars for. So but there's a, there's a bit of a risk in that if you make the project too big, then you can never get enough money together to actually build it.
Okay.
Yeah, but there definitely are places where those, you know, you can be strategic about it, right? To, you know, make improvements for the community and manage stormwater at the same time.
Yeah, I'd definitely be interested to hear more about that as we progress because I think in identifying these places as we update some of the other plans, I think would be helpful to hear about where, like, you know, maybe some of these connections could be made. So, but yeah, I'm excited to see all that. So that's all my questions, but thank you.
Yeah, sure. Thank you for your questions. Yeah.
I thought a question, I think it was just a little bit more out of curiosity. With the new, you said it's a new Department of Ecology permit? And you're talking about the overburdened communities and their proximity to the highways. But what is ecology asking to report on about those communities? Is just like a development is taking place here? It just is like, and then what?
I think it's more about stormwater retrofits. So you take an area that's already constructed and has been for a while and look for opportunities to improve the water quality, similar to that, you know, 220th and 70th project. So that, I think, what, I mean, what ecology is asking is to sort of say, let, you know, map these, these communities that you identified in your, identified in your city. And then also map the drainage basins that you're going to retrofit and, you know, look for overlaps where you can do, have multiple benefits.
Okay.
That's, I think, part of what they're trying to ask for.
Awesome. Thanks for that clarification.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. I will be back to do a public hearing on this on the 19th? No, wait, 9th, the 9th of December. Yeah.
Yep.
Fantastic. Thank you.
All right. Looks like up next is item number seven, code update implementation for 2024, 2025.
All right. Good evening, Chair Batista, Vice Chair Batcher, members of the Planning Commission. Jonathan Morales, I'm a senior planner at the City of Montrezl. It's good to see you all again. I know it's been a couple of, couple of months? So today I'm here to present an overview of the upcoming work that we're going to be doing over the next six to seven months. So I have a brief slideshow. If I can get this to work. What's going on here? Okay, there we go. Sorry, one moment. Okay, so the purpose of today's presentation is just to provide an overview of the upcoming development code amendments and zoning updates that we'll be doing related to implementation of our adopted comprehensive plan, MLT Vision 2044, and state legislative requirements required by June 30th, 2025. And then we'll provide an overview of other work that we're tracking and will be doing along the same timeline in 2025. So we have an housing action plan as well as a critical areas ordinance update. And I have this image here just to show how all of these various processes from the state level to the regional level to the local county level to the city level, how that, our local comprehensive plan guides our local zoning and development regulations as well as development of different programs to implement key policies. So overview of general timeline, wanted to go over the RFP that we put out. So we had an RFP for an housing action plan and development code amendments, provided an overview of the upcoming code amendments and legislative requirements and then other planned work. So we have quite the, quite the work ahead of us. So I broke this down by showing what is listed in the scope of services in the RFP. So that's, that work will be done between January and mid-June 2025. So key parts of this will be implementing the comprehensive plan through zoning and development regulations, implementing legislative requirements such as House Bill 1110, HB 1337, so that middle housing and ADU code, and then the housing action plan concurrent with this process. And the vision for the housing action plan is to further along some of those strategies that we identified in the comprehensive plan update related to housing and try to develop some action steps to see those through. And then other planned work, again, critical areas ordinance update. That timeline will be early 2025, trying to start in February, and that will go until about Octoberish 2025. One of the key items that we'll be taking to you all in the next couple of months is this SB 5290, which is amends the Local Project Review Act specific to permit review timelines. So we need to adopt new permit review timelines to meet state requirements. And then I have here two items from Public Works that they'll be bringing to you. So we have an update on the engineering design manual. That, that work will start in late summer 2025. And then the water comprehensive plan and the sewer comprehensive plan processes will be towards the end of 2025. And Laura presented on the stormwater comp plan, which hopefully will be adopted at the next meeting. Sorry, recommended to adopt. So we issued a request for proposals on November 9th. That was a Saturday. Proposals were due today by 4:00 PM. So we received a total of four responses. I believe there's two firms that are local and then two out of state. We have a pretty ambitious timeline in that we want to have a consultant selected by December 10th and council authorize a contract by December 19. And the reason for this is because of the funds that we've allocated here are ARPA dollars. And so those need to be obligated by the end of the year. And then the scope of services, again, that we would like this consultant team to help us work through, zoning and development regulations, housing strategy and action plan. We also wanted to tie in some development feasibility analysis and then engagement and outreach. So first part here in terms of implementation of the comprehensive plan, we want to first adopt zoning that's consistent with the land use map that we've adopted. So that specifically is looking at zoning related to the new neighborhood mixed-use areas, zoning for residential zoning districts, specifically middle housing, and then other zoning updates. So we made some changes, for example, to the Gateway Mixed Use Area. We've upzoned some areas at the south side of the city to neighborhood mixed use. Well, another part of this is developing hybrid zoning. So right now we have a Euclidean zoning, which is basically zoning that is restricted by land use type. So moving away from that kind of zoning to a more hybrid zoning, and that can be combination of Euclidean zoning, form-based or performance-based. So form base is basically looking at the urban form, how a city develops in terms of its built form. And then performance base is based on performance standards that we've set up criteria related to how different land use impacts, how it impacts the neighboring properties, for example. And then develop urban design standards. So that's a key part of this as well. And specifically to infill development, small home development, middle housing, and urban design for neighborhood mixed-use areas. And then we have existing design standards that we'd like to take a look at and see if there's any way to update those as necessary. So for legislative requirements, House Bill 1110, and then there was a trailer bill, I think this last session, HB 2321. So this is required to be adopted by the city on June 15th. And we're tied to that deadline because we have a grant fund that we've presented to you all before. So we've done a preliminary middle housing ordinance that we need to finalize. And so this work will continue that. Just generally, this House bill is to, we're required to allow up to two units per lot. We're a tier-three city. And this does not prohibit single-family development. HB 1337 is allowing up to two ADUs on a single lot, whether detached or attached. And this is in addition to the unit density requirement for middle housing. I do have a slide next, after this, sort of, sort of showing what the policy choice we have as a city in terms of unit density. HB 1042 is conversion of existing buildings for residential use. And so this promotes the conversion of existing commercial or mixed-use buildings for residential use only. So this is moving from a strictly commercial building to multifamily or mixed-use building to multifamily. So that would remove that commercial component. Not sure if that would work in the areas that we specifically want to zone, neighborhood commercial, because we do want that commercial use. But we'll take a closer look at what this means for us. HB 1293 is streamlining design review. And so that's basically establishing standards for local design review, streamline, stream, sorry, streamlining processes and removing barriers. And so we're legislatively required to implement these six months after the periodic update to the comprehensive plan. So that's June 30th, 2025. And the Department of Commerce has been pretty helpful in providing guidance and publishing guidance for local governments to use to try to understand how this impacts us locally. So from what I understand, based on review of commerce guidance and things that they've communicated, is that local governments have a policy choice to make in whether we want to count ADUs toward the unit density requirement for middle housing. So there's two sections here on what, what this could look like. So HB 1337, we, sorry. So this shows like allowing a single-family development, two ADUs, or just a two-unit density per lot. And then this has the two-unit density plus an ADU, or two-unit density plus the two ADUs. And so how the legislative, legislation reads now is two units plus two ADUs. But again, we can make that decision when we update code and implement an ordinance adopting this. House Bill 1998 is related to co-living. And so this one is sort of end of December, end of year 2025. So this is to allow co-living as a permitted use on any lot that allows at least six residential units, including on a lot that is zoned for mixed-use development. So some areas that this would be required is some of our R3, R4 residential uses, as well as our neighborhood mixed-use areas and gateway mixed-use town center. And I'm not sure that we will tackle this with, over the next six months, we might push this out, considering we have some time. SB, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm super glad to see that deadline not in June.
SB 5258 is unit lot subdivisions. And so we actually are pretty much doing this right now. We have fee simple unit lot subdivision requirements in our code, as well as short plat processes. And so we'll take a closer look, just make sure that there's nothing else that we need to incorporate. That's why we will be hiring a consultant. HB 1220, so we've addressed this through our comprehensive plan update in terms of the housing needs assessment and land capacity analysis, and the racial disparate impacts analysis that was done. So this is just ensuring that we have specific code and criteria related to emergency housing, permanent supportive housing, and that we have code and zoning that adopts the various housing types to accommodate this. So any questions? Move forward.
Are we going to be able to do this all? This seems like a lot. Glad, I'm glad we've started on the middle housing part like a while ago.
I would say it is a lot. We're not going to lie. I would say the good news is, is that we were thinking of these things during the comp plan process and through our land use mapping. And we have been working on some middle housing issues prior to this. So it will be a lot of work to get through, but I think we'll have at least a start on having thought through how we're going to do this, or how we think we're going to do this, to be able to get through the planning commission and adoption by council. So enjoy the holidays, because we're gonna, you know, we're gonna be, it's gonna feel like the comp plan again, on just getting this first part done. And then we're gonna have, you know, the other stuff that we need to do by the end of the year. So it's, yeah, it's gonna be another busy year for the planning commission, for sure.
Well, I'm really glad we set up, I feel like we had a good rhythm with the comp plan where like we got the information before we were able to comment on it and then kind of discuss. I'd like to see that moving forward. I think that that was a good, like, efficient way of sort of channeling some of our discussion.
Yeah, I think so.
We've prepared.
Yeah, I think so, that would be good. And then also just, we really tried to move the council along as well, so they didn't feel like they were getting something at the end. So kind of earmarking that. I think the bigger issue is going to be making sure that we continue a good public outreach process within that condensed timeline, but still getting adequate input for the portions of these bills that we have to adopt by June. I think it was said before by Laura in Stormwater, we're not the only ones. This is kind of everyone. And, you know, since we're the first ones in for adopting comp plans, the city and Snohomish County, a lot of things are, you know, the sausage is kind of still getting made at the state level, and it's just kind of what it is at this point. It's, we'll just have to deal with it and, you know, be very thoughtful in our approach and do the best we can.
Yeah, I know, I feel like at some point during the comp plan discussion, there was a discussion about maybe creating a housing task force, and I guess we have to be really fast if we're going to. Otherwise, they're just going to be commenting on things we've already approved.
Yeah. Yeah, it's gonna be interesting, because it's kind of like the chicken or the egg when it comes to housing. And so I think really, it's, if you look at it, though, I guess from, I think, staff perspective and others, it really is about middle housing. You know, it really is. We've done the other stuff for a long time, but really, it's about providing for middle housing and some of these other housing types, and how we do that effectively. So to me, really, after we've done a lot of the housing work with Leland, is now, how does that translate to code, and how does that translate to implementation, right? So I think that's the good news, without trying to overly complicate it, is we're at the regulation part.
All right, this is my sigh of relief.
Yeah. And we might have to build in a couple of meetings here or there, but I think we can do it. I really do. When you have to do it, you just, you know, we have to do it, and like I said, there's been a lot of thought prior to of how we're thinking we're going to do things. So I feel confident that we have the staff and we have, we'll get some consultant help that we're putting our best foot forward. And then like all things, you know, there may be some things that we think are going to work out really great, or the intent of the legislation, a lot of times it's, you know, the intent is there, but how does it actually work on the ground? And so I would imagine with all the legislation that's been adopted in the last couple of sessions, that, you know, we're going to see this maneuver, you know, maneuver a little bit, and then we'll have to be on that to do that as well. But I think our comp plan's going to be pretty solid, so if we need to adjust a little bit, we can, we can definitely do that. It's time. It's time anyways, I think, you know, so.
All right. So some of the other work that we'll be doing. So I, not done. So this one is sort of on our bachelor timeline, because this will be, state preemption takes effect first of January 2025, which means that the default permit timelines will go into effect. So for all permits that don't have a notice requirement, we're required to come to a decision within 65 days from an application being deemed complete. 100 days if that, if there's a notice required and there's no public hearing, so that's an administrative decision, 100 days. And then 170 days with notice required and a public hearing required. And so public hearing could be hearing examiner or other public hearing. And so some exceptions may apply, such as consolidated review, or if a larger project might require amending the amount of days to come to a decision.
I just wanted to add to this. Local project review has been around since the early, maybe not the early 90s. I get my years and decades mixed up. But in the 90s, the state found that some jurisdictions were taking an awful long time on reviewing land use applications, and so local jurisdictions were tied to a certain numbers, certain number of days to process. So 120 days for land use has been kind of considered the standard for a very long time. What you see here is just a further breakdown of those requirements of trying to speed up some of the administrative reviews a little bit more. So this will be taking a look at our processing times, which we did three years ago, I think. We went through our procedures. So we'll be doing that again and clarifying some of that work, and then adding these project review timelines into that as well. So this is kind of just an extra, extra thing that we've got to incorporate right here. So we've had it, but this is definitely trying to move permits along where they're continuing maybe not to move along as fast as the legislature would like to see in some jurisdictions.
And then, so lastly, we have our critical areas ordinance update that's required by December 31st, 2025. And the purpose of this is to adopt and update regulations to protect critical areas, protect the public from natural hazards like flooding and landslides, protect environmentally sensitive areas like wetlands and fish and wildlife habitat, and this is supported by best available science. So this work will be hopefully beginning in February, and it'll go pretty much up to end of December, probably late fall, early fall. Yeah. And then my colleague will be leading this. And then for Public Works, there's a couple of things on their timeline. So engineering design manual will be updated late summer 2025, and then the sewer and water comp plan end of 2025. And so in terms of next steps, once we have a consultant team selected, we would like to come back to the planning commission to introduce the team and the scope of work that we landed on in late January to provide an overview. And then staff anticipates presenting an ordinance to implement SB 5290, so that's the permit view timelines, by February 2025. And I put here some links to Commerce guidance for you to look at at your own time. That's it.
I'll let Nick ask, since he's the chair, but I have questions.
Oh, sorry, I cut out there for a second. My, the meeting keeps dropping for me, so hopefully you guys can hear me. So as part of the comp plan update process this year, we deferred looking at our subareas themselves, possibly changing the boundaries, possibly creating smaller subareas, and with that, you know, neighborhood names and identification. And it was said that was going to be deferred to 2025. Some of this is, you know, that is sort of tangentially related to some of these topics. Will that work be integrated into the, these timelines that you presented tonight, or is that something that will occur separately next year?
Yeah, I think in all reality, Chair Batista, we're looking at 26. We asked for money in the budget, but with all the legislation that's been passed that we need to focus on as far as zoning goes, I think it's fair to say that we need to put our efforts into that, and update of the critical area ordinance and our process and procedures. And as far as we know, unless there's new legislation passed, I don't believe we have a lot earmarked for 26, and I think we could spend our time doing, taking a look at those boundaries for our subareas, and then maybe breaking those down into neighborhood areas, and what, you know, what does that mean to do some work on that? And we should have some time. If we're required to have critical areas done by the end of next year, I'm hoping we can get it done in fall, so we're not pushing right up against that date to give us a little room at the end of the year to maybe work on some things. We were just talking today, our home occupation code needs to be updated. I mean, there's a laundry list, right? So I think it provides an opportunity to say, hey, what can we start working on as we're rolling into 26? I think we're, our shoreline master program is going to be okay. I'm hoping critical areas is not a huge lift. Our last plan was adopted in 2019. There's some, you know, new guidance, but I think hopefully we're in fairly good shape on that. So yeah, we can talk about maybe the end of this year, and we'll have some more discussion on this for your work plan for 25 as well. This was just a little, hey, heads up, we're going to start jumping into things in January, so be ready to go. But we still have the conversation of the work plan, and maybe we can take a look at work plan for 25 and 26.
Okay. Commissioner Vetter?
How did you know I had questions? Where does the transportation master plan fit into this? Not to throw more logs on this already raging fire, but I think that's also very important as well.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the timing. There's been a lot of kind of segmented, segmented work, and I know they did a kind of patch job this year on some things, and we're working on, they're working on impact fees?
Yeah, traffic impact fees.
Traffic impact fees as part of the remaining work that was being done by Fair and Peers for the comp plan, but a full rewrite. I am not sure on what the timing of that process is. We can definitely find out that information. I know due to requirements, definitely stormwater, because it's required as part of our general stormwater permitting. And then I know we're behind for sewer and water comp plans. So I think those have kind of floated to the top and have to get done, but we can find out about the transportation as well.
Yeah, that totally makes sense. We're through the eye of the needle here, and that's kind of dictating timelines. I do think the transportation master plan is very important, though, because it's sort of one of those critical elements that makes all the schemes work without making us explode in traffic so much. So anything we can do even to like address some of those components, I know we talked about multimodal level of service, like even if we're just kind of touching on some of that without necessarily doing a full update, I think some of those new concepts would be helpful to integrate. I think Nick asked my question about subarea planning and how that works, and what does House Bill 1042 say? I'm not familiar with that one.
So that is, not sure of the specifics, but basically, we're required to allow for conversion of existing buildings for residential use only.
Okay.
So that's like a commercial building being converted to a multifamily.
And as far as I know, we don't disallow that. Is that like, they look at incentivization? Are we supposed to like, what are we supposed to do for that?
Well, I think this is, I mean, it's going to be interesting for us, because we do want to preserve a component of commercial in some of these areas, so we'll have to take a closer look at that. I think this is trying to do address by the legislature that we have a bunch of empty office space in Seattle, et cetera, and due to how they were constructed, what's an efficient way not to de-incentivize, but to incentivize that we're going to convert those uses that are probably not needed in the square footage that we have to convert those to residential use.
What is our current occupancy vacancy rate, or office vacancy rate? Do we know that?
I do not know offhand here, but, you know, I would imagine in Seattle, we've known that it's fairly large. And so I think that's probably the bigger purpose of that legislation, is where, you know, some cities are really struggling with that. And, and instead of being prohibitive in the building codes to see And, and instead of being prohibitive in the building codes to see how we can make that work zoning and building code wise, so.
Okay. And then I also have a request. I think we had, you know, some discussion about a vision statement in the comp plan for the housing plan. You know, I've heard people, when they're talking about implementing some of this stuff, make some unintentional vision statements. Like I read somewhere that there was a city council member in one of our regions suburbs that said, well, can we just put all this stuff in a little corner of the city? And like, that is a vision statement, but I don't think it was intended to be one. I think it would be helpful to start off with like some basic like value statements for our housing plan about like, what is housing? What does it look like? You know, what are we aspiring to do? Like I would say, you know, every kind of housing should be somewhat desirable and it should protect the health, safety and welfare. Like things kind of logically flow from these concepts that we would put in a vision statement. And I think the comp plan was helped by that. And I would like to see that kind of continue for some of these larger plans that we're putting together.
Yeah, no problem. I think we have a good start with the comp plan. I mean, you have in the housing element, some fairly specific golden goal and policy language in there that I think really addresses whatever's been said wherever. That really, it's always been part of the goal of the city to, to provide a variety of housing types. And that means variety as far as location, cost, size, you know, those type of things. So you're really trying to address housing needs by all components of your population. So I think we can start there, but I think just like in the comp plan, we need to kind of understand what the overall intent is. And then we can use that as a touchstone for all the things that we do. But I think we have some pretty good language going in. So yep, we'll do that for sure.
Yeah, that's good. And I think that's also something we can do without a consultant necessarily diving into a bunch of stuff. So that can help us like set the ground, set the pace going forward for this very long sprint we have going ahead.
Yeah, don't worry. You'll see Jonathan and I quite a bit. And I'm kind, this is actually, even though it's going to go really fast, this is, this is the fun part. It really is. This is, this is where the rubber meets the road of all of those things that, that we said that we want to try to achieve, that this is our opportunity to make those things happen. So that's a cool part.
And I'll just add on the housing action plan, a lot of that legwork was already done. We have the data and the analysis, so we know what we're working with going forward. Yeah.
Another sigh of relief here.
Yeah, there's been some, there's been some really good work that, you know, Leland put together some, I think some really good work for us to, to go off of. So like I said, it's, it's going to be a lot, but we're not starting from ground zero, which is good.
Well, you planned it well, so. Good job, planning department.
And I also think we can be a little more flexible maybe with the housing action plan since we're not so tied down to the deadline aspect of it. That's really the state legislation that's driving that deadline, but we can be a little flexible.
Good.
Yeah. So for instance, if the housing action plan takes us to the end of the summer, but we have the components that we need for the middle housing and the legislation ready by June, then you know, that's something that's going to be okay. So that's why we tried to, to put a little wiggle in the end of this year.
Fantastic.
Sorry, I was muted. Any other questions? I am not hearing or seeing any. Just wanted to check in. I always forget to check in with our online commissioners, especially since I'm actually one tonight. So just want to make sure that we're not overlooking you guys and if you had any questions for staff.
None on my end, just kind of soaking everything and getting up to speed, but should have some more context for the, for the next meeting.
Great, thanks. All right. So not hearing or seeing any, I think, probably obviously on the ninth, we'll probably revisit the, if we want to cancel the 23rd. My guess is yes, but for now we'll keep it open just in case something comes up where we need to, we need to have the meeting, but I think by the ninth, we'll probably know if.
Sounds good.
Okay, so item number nine, miscellaneous business by call of planning commissioners. So for once I have one, I just want to apologize for not being there in person. I have a couple of symptoms of coming down with something of varying degrees of annoyance and out of abundance of caution, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't going to be a super spreader to you guys, just in case. So I figured I'd take advantage of the technology and attend remotely. So again, my apologies. I don't like doing remotely, only just because it's, it's obviously hard to chair a meeting when you're not there. But I definitely encourage all of you guys to do remote if, you know, it suits your, you know, current situation more. So those are my two cents. So anybody else have any miscellaneous business, any future absences, vacations that they know are coming up?
Yes, I need to be excused from the December 9th meeting. Please.
All right. So would anybody like to make a motion to have an excused absence for Commissioner there?
Motion to excuse Commissioner Stenson from the December 9th meeting.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. You now have an excused absence.
I'll remember.
Make the most of it.
Chair Batista, did you want to bring forth a motion for Commissioner Morgan?
Oh, yes. Yeah, do we, I can't remember. Did, did he say he was going to try and couldn't make it or we just haven't heard anything at all?
He said he would try, but that he wasn't sure he would be able to.
Okay, we'll, we'll treat that as an excuse absence request. So would anybody like to make a motion for an excuse option for Commissioner Morgan for tonight?
Motion to excuse Commissioner Morgan.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to excuse Commissioner Morgan from tonight's meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries as well. Thank you for that reminder.
Is it too early to request an excused absence for the 23rd?
I mean, you might have an idea then of attendance.
I will probably request one on the ninth if we don't cancel it. Unless you have a party and I can bring my out of town relatives.
It'd be like show and tell.
Mom, dad?
Oh, sorry. Was there a question? I heard a bunch of laughter.
No, no, no question. If you know for a fact you won't be able to attend the 23rd, I mean, I guess it, it helps maybe just take a straw poll right now. If we know we're not going to have a quorum, we might as well cancel the 23rd now. But if we know there's a possibility of a quorum and/or if there's any last minute thing that the city may want to bring to us to help alleviate the beginning of the year crunch that we're going to experience, I'm open to entertaining opinions and.
If we're taking a straw poll, I can be here on the 23rd.
I'll be present as well. This is Commissioner Landis. I will not be available on the 23rd.
I guess that just leaves me. I can be here if we have to, especially if there's hot wassail.
So I've lost count of how many times Zoom has kicked me out of this meeting tonight. And so I missed most of your guys' comments. So if it sounds like we have at least a quorum who might be available for the 23rd, we can keep it open for now. But like I said, unless city, unless staff has something that they think they might want to bring to us on the, you know, and they won't know until the ninth, you know, I'm, I'm open to canceling it now.
I think we can decide on the ninth.
Okay, sounds good. All right. One last call for miscellaneous business. Anybody got anything? All right, not hearing or seeing anything. The only thing I have is for staff for me, can you just hold on to whatever packet you created for me for tonight and I'll just pick it up at the next meeting?
Will do. It'll be kept at my desk.
Awesome, thank you. So with that, I'll go ahead and declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Night, everyone.
Thank you very much.